Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to call our township meeting for the Board of Supervisors for November 10th, 2022 to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fran, do you have some announcements?
Yes, thanks, Laura. The Montgomery County Planning Commission will hold an open house on the Cross Country Trail West feasibility study on November 17th at Miles Park Building. Those attending will have an opportunity to ask questions and engage in a mapping exercise and survey. Attendees can arrive anytime between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM to participate. Pop-up engagement sessions will take place on Saturday, November 19th at the following locations: intersection of Schuylkill River Trail and Cross County Trail in Conshohocken, behind the Grand at Riverview Apartments, 350 West Elm Street between 10:00 AM and 11:30 AM, and 4 Washington State Park near the Hawk Watch Observation Deck, parking lot 5, between 12:00 PM and 1:30 PM. Join a tree planting on November 19th. Volunteers are needed for a tree planting in Valley Green Park on Saturday, November 19th. The Township Colonial Canopy Trees and the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society will plant 13 trees to supplement the existing canopy of large native shade trees. The planting will begin at 9:30 AM at Valley Green Park, 6:30 East Valley Green Road. Volunteers should bring a shovel, gardening gloves, watering cans, snacks or drinks you might need, a hat, and sunscreen. Recycle campaign signs at the Township Building. The Township is once again a recycling center for election signs. Signs can be brought to the rear of the Township Building through November 15th. Register for a Gingerbread House decorating party by December 2nd. Park &amp; Recreation's annual Gingerbread House decorating party is Sunday, December 11th. Spots for this tradition are limited, so please register by December 2nd on the Township website. Thank you.
Thanks, Fran. Okay, moving to our approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from October 13th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And the next item is an ordinance. I'll read it, and then we have some comments, I think, here. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1017? Oops, sorry, there. "Amending the local tax collection law requiring the tax collector to waive additional charges for the real estate taxes following the transfer of real property where the notice of real estate taxes was not received beginning in the tax year 2023 in accordance with Act 57 of 2022."
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is something we reviewed at the last month's meeting. What this is, is a new act that was put in place by the state legislature. It now allows if somebody basically is new and purchasing a home, does not receive a tax bill, that they would have an opportunity to fill out a waiver claim that would go to the township evaluated, and then they would have their interest in penalties waived, a one-time waiver of that. Again, it's only for people who are moving in. They'd have to show some proof. There's some documents on the Department of DCED website that would have to be followed. We're required to have this ordinance in place by January, which we're well within that time, so that it takes effect for the tax year of 2023.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please... Yes. Mr. Miller, will you please call roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Ms. Tureen?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes, thank you. Okay, going on to motions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2023 work budget as the 2023 preliminary budget as required in the Township's Home Rule Charter?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. I'll start off. We're very excited to have a work budget, our 2023 work budget, which is balanced. It's very rare for us to get to this point this early, but I'll let Kevin kind of walk through the reasons why we're showing a balanced work budget. I will say that a lot of work has been put into this by Kevin and the Finance Department, as well as all the department heads in getting to this point. So with that, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Kevin Barron.
Okay. It is my honor to present this to you, the board, tonight. As Rick said, we've been working on this since the beginning of August, meeting with all the departments, putting all the numbers together, and then putting it together and giving to you October 1st, based on the work budget to the Board of Supervisors. October 10th and 17th, we met with department heads. They went over everything, explaining stuff to you, what they were requesting, and then we met with them the 17th with the answering groups, the firehouses, the ambulance, and they explained what they were looking for. Next part of that is tonight, the preliminary budget, which we will... Click happy. Which Rick said, we're presenting a balanced budget. Revenues at this time, when we put the budget together, were $20,282,036, and expenditures are the same, $20,282,036, which is a deficit of zero. Hit the right way, we'll be good. So, of the revenues, here's the breakout of the funds: property taxes, real estate taxes, transfer tax, and the earning income tax. The main reason we have a balanced budget is the earning income tax. We've discussed this with the board. The earning income tax for White Marsh Township has been unbelievably great for us. I know Rick shared with you last meeting, I could not make that. We are the third highest township in Montgomery County collecting earning income tax for so far this year. Compared to some of the sizes of some other townships, that's pretty good. There's some townships that are two, three times the size of us, and we're getting, we're collecting more money. So that's one of the big part, is that, and the business taxes are all, at this time, collected above revenue, above budget, so that helps us out. So we've increased some of the revenues. I know I went over that at our budget meeting, when I increased to make this balance. For those people that don't look at numbers and like looking at graphs, this is the graph. I noticed it today that it was pretty tight and...
Busy.
Busy? Yes, thanks, Rick. I'll fill this, finish this up for the next meeting, get some of the numbers off it and clean it up. But this just shows you the percentages. If you look at the percentages, if you take the real estate tax, which is the blue, the $4 million, the earning income tax down to $7 million, that's 11, and the business taxes $2, and then the fund balance, you're talking $15 million of the $20 million just in them topics, not counting all the other little things that add up to be a whole $5 million, so. And this is the department's budgets throughout the general fund. As you see, same number. Again, a little cleaner graph. I don't know how I did that one and let the revenues sit as bad as it was. But, you know, as we all know, police is one of our biggest departments, Public Works, employee benefits. I think the number is like 75% of the budget is employees' wages and benefits and to fill the staff of the township. That is not good. So, again, the budget positive notes. Real estate taxes are collecting, are higher than the past couple of years, and the reason is our assessment went up a little bit, and we're right on the same 90-some percent collected as we've been for the last few years. Earning income tax and revenue and business taxes are already hitting budget, or the earning income tax, obviously, we're a quarter behind because we don't get the fourth quarter to January, February, but compared to previous years, we're above where we were. Real estate transfer tax is below last year, but last year we had a lot of... At the beginning of 2021, we had a development that was still selling, so there was a lot of houses selling that development. So your, our real estate transfer tax was about $1,001, we're going to hit about $900,000 this year. Building permits are up at budget, health insurance costs are down due to a change that we made the beginning of 2022, which will be effective also in 2023. In 2022 and 2023, a decrease in the MMO for the police pension plan. Sorry to tell you that I don't want to look for 2024's numbers, because it's based on the investments, and we all know what's happening with the investments right now. But maybe things will turn around in the next month and a half, and we'll be in good shape. Reserve fund balance, we have money there to balance our budget. And liquid fuels, we moved some things in 2022 and 2023 from the general fund over to liquid fuels. We were using our liquid fuels money to do our road program, and we brought that back into the general fund, and we took some of the other programs: salt, snow removal, street cleaning, and put it in liquid fuels, so it helped us out balancing the budget. And we're budgeted two things next year, to buy a new street sweeper and the new fixed-to-salt dome that's, we've been told, is not up to par. So that was being, to be able to take out of liquid fuels, because we have money there, so that helped it, instead of coming out of capital. This is the real estate transfer tax through the years. 2022 is, as of when I did the budget, it is now $850,000. We just got the last month's collected. You can see the couple of years that 2017, 2019, 2021, if you went back and looked at them years, there were developments that were built and houses were selling. Here's the average on the assessed value. As you can see, it's kind of leveled out all the way through. So that's, you know, general fund debt. It's going up a little bit each year, and it's kind of plateaued to be equal amount for this year as it will be next year. I'm dead. There we go. I think I said this last year, my first budget here. I like showing this chart. I think it's a great chart for the township. It shows the millages for, and the tax breakout for the whole township: school tax, Montgomery County Community, the community college tax, the Montgomery County tax, and the township tax. As you can see, based on this chart, the taxes for White Marsh Township is 7.61% of the taxes that the township residents pay. So, if someone says our taxes are through the roof, no, they're not. Our taxes are pretty leveled out and fair. And my last slide is, I hope everyone has a happy holidays. See you in December.
Thank you, Kevin. That's very impressive. We appreciate your hard work, the whole team, hard work.
I enjoy the budget. I know nobody else does, but...
And the slides were, the slides were great. You don't need to go back.
See your enthusiasm.
It's all good.
No, it's cleaned up, so.
It's all good. I appreciate it. I know there's been a lot that goes into that. Do we have any board comments, questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That is amazing. Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion to allocate $797.01 in donations received from the Fall Shredding Day to Barron Hill Volunteer Fire Company for volunteering their time and services in coordinating activities on the day of the event?
So moved. Second.
Always appreciate this day.
Yes. Thank you, Chair Nester. Yes, it was another good day. They actually had some good weather that day, that they had the shredding day, and Barron Hill Volunteer Fire Company had personnel out there helping along with the shredding day and the Parks and Recreation Department. It was a good day. People, again, were generous, their donations, they're not required to do that, and what we do is we split that between the Parks and Rec for Township Day and to that volunteer first responder agency. As you know, we rotate those around amongst the fire companies and the ambulance, and it was Barron Hill's turn, and this is the donation amount, to be sent to them for their efforts.
Excellent, thank you. Any board comments, questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment to comply with PADEP's 2022 Model Stormwater Management Ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
Thank you. As you may know, the township is required to obtain a permit through DEP to operate our municipal separate storm sewer system, or MS4. This year, each year we have to file an annual report describing how we're complying with the terms of that permit, and that one of this year's requirements is that we adopt or amend our stormwater ordinance to match DEP's model ordinance. So basically, we're required to adopt it. So what was done was it was merged with our current ordinance, which actually consists of two separate documents. So this is providing a great opportunity to merge the two, which are Chapter 58 and Resolution 2004-8, into one cohesive ordinance, making it easier to understand. Tonight, we're seeking authorization to advertise for the hearing, so we can talk more about it at the future meeting, but that's the general gist of what we're looking to do.
Were there a lot of changes?
A lot of it was definitions. There wasn't anything wacky. There was something good with limestone and karst under lane areas, which we have a lot of in the township, so that is a welcome addition. There was some strengthening of riparian corridor and buffer easements, and then some additional technical requirements for water quality treatment. So before, there weren't... It basically said you had to do water quality, BMPs. Now it says, here's the calculations to design this.
Some more clarity?
Yeah.
All around.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any board questions? Comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment for Chapter 55 Tree Protection Standards?
So moved. Second.
I know my colleague on the board here, J.C., has been working diligently hard on this. J.C., would you like to take this?
Yes, I just have a few comments. Over a year and a half ago, a working group comprised of two members of the Shade Tree Commission, our Assistant Township Manager and Arborist, met to begin the process of making meaningful changes to Chapter 55. I was fortunate to be the board liaison for this group, witnessing the hard work, research, and detailed changes that would be put before the solicitor for approval, before being boated on by the STC, and finally, coming before us at the Board of Supervisors today. With more than 15 meetings, countless emails, discussions, and edits, I applaud this group for their diligence, attention to detail, and most of all, their passion for the tree canopy and its preservation. I extend a sincere thank you to Steve Ziegler, Chair of the Shade Tree Commission, to Tam Politz, to Stephen Kaufman, to Patrice Tureen, who early on was part of our working group before she became a Board of Supervisors member, and other members of the community who offered their ideas and their input: Sean Halbom, our former Assistant Township Manager, and Craig McNally, our new Assistant Township Manager, Rick Meller, and Dave Sander from our Solicitor's Office. I thank you all immensely. As I mentioned many times in our working group meetings, Chapter 55 will continue to be a living, breathing document. We will continue to monitor, assess as we move for, and assess as we move forward. I'm proud of the work that this group has done. I'm excited about this ordinance and the protections it's going to provide, and I hope that you are as well. You should be extremely proud of the work you've done. So I'm excited that this day has finally come, and that it's here, and it's ready for a vote from the Board of Supervisors. The one thing I'd like to do before we vote on it and before you folks get to comment, because you definitely deserve that, is to have Rick explain the next steps in the process now that this day is finally here.
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor Toll. Certainly, a brief, you know, comment cannot do justice, the amount of hours that were put into looking at this ordinance amendment. And obviously, I was not involved to the level of detail that you and the others that you mentioned were involved, but we're at a point now where it's a two-step process. Tonight, the board will consider authorization to advertise that ordinance. That ordinance will be advertised in a paper of general circulation at Times Herald. Then there will be a public hearing, and there will be a vote to adopt that ordinance at our December 8th meeting. There'll be enough time with, in accordance with the law, to advertise and have it before you on that December 8th meeting. As Supervisor Toll mentioned, this is a lot of, a lot of detail went into this amendment. There is a lot of strengthening, the tree protection. You know, I tell people all the time, White Marsh loves their trees, you know, and certainly care for them, and there's a lot of people in this community that do care about trees and the canopy, and maintaining the canopy or replacing the canopy where necessary. So it'll be a lot of protections in there, strengthening those protections, really trying to define and really put in a great deal of detail for folks that would have to comply with this section of the code. So the step tonight, after you hear from everybody, would be if the board is so inclined to approve it, it will then go to advertisement.
Great, thank you.
I just want to add a thank you to John Hosback, our Arborist, who helped us tremendously on this as well. He was an integral part of it.
Great team effort. Do we have any other board comments? Public comments?
Hi, Steve Ziegler, Chairman of the Shade Tree Commission. Yeah, it was a lot of work, and I really appreciate the diligence and the work that Steve and Tam put in. They are really the writers of this thing, and I would like to extend my appreciation to the board for allowing us to have some public input on the committee that finally wrote this, rewrote this ordinance. So, thank you. Thank you, J.C. Thanks to Sean, Craig, and John. It was, it was a long haul, but we did it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I guess I should identify myself. Steve Kaufman, Hards Ridge Road. It was a privilege to serve in this group. It took 18 months, and we certainly ended up with a stronger and clearer ordinance. And there are some unsung heroes here, I think one of which is Dave Sander, who I think, as of last... I know that, that surprises you.
Yeah, definitely.
But at some point, you took a look at one of our earlier drafts and sort of pruned it back a little bit, but not very much.
Pun intended.
Yeah, pun intended, exactly. But the whole idea was, the solicitor needs to feel that we're not overreaching, that we're not going beyond the bounds of the kind of incremental change, which is, I think, permissible in these circumstances. So the heart and soul of the ordinance survived that pruning, and it was, Rick, it was actually a wonderful result. One thing which is kind of hidden is that all of a sudden developers will have to make a case for getting waivers following the standards of 105, and that was something that David accepted. I think that's helpful, because it's possible to develop a record. To give Sean his due, he came up with the notion of a mitigation plan to be approved by the Shade Tree Commission, being required if there were violations. Sort of said that sentence backwards, but it's a very good way of checking a developer in the course of, the course of things. And also, our current Acting Assistant Manager, Craig, was very good in the last month or so of getting this together. And one thing he did was, we saw some of, you know, one of your memos, David, so we could see directly, oh, this is what's going on and why we can't do this, and why it makes sense that we can't do this. This is the enforcement business. So, the end of the process just wrapped up wonderfully, and it was helpful that we ended up on that note. So thank you. Oh, there's other names, people I could, I won't spend beyond my five minutes, but J.C. definitely gets an award of some sort for dragging the process out of the mud and his participants. Maybe what, four or five times between about June and September?
There were some bumps in the road, but we got back on track.
Yeah, right, well, that's more, that's more diplomatically put. Some of us were bumps in the road. So anyway, thank you very much. I hope this all goes through smoothly when it gets advertised, but thank you for your support.
I'm Tam Politz, Edmonds Road. I concur with all that we've been hearing so far. Thank you so much to everyone who was involved. Your help was tremendously helpful to us at the very end to get an understanding of where we were going with this process. Thank you all to the board for allowing us the opportunity to be involved with this. This is something that we feel really passionately about, to protect our environment, and Steve and I have more time on our hands than some of the other people in the township, and I hope that we've put it to the best possible use. My goal, when I was working on this project, was to make the ordinance more clear and less contentious when we're reviewing them in the Shade Tree Commission process. And so I think this is going to be easier for the commissioners, it's going to be easier for the applicants, and I think that that's really important to make, to make the approach easier for the people who are coming into the township and dealing with us. So I hope that we've approved, we've proven to do that, and I wish everybody all the best as this goes forward, and we'll keep watching to see how all the changes work out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Virtual or other? Clearly, a lot of attention to detail on this, and everyone seems quite appreciative, and we all are, and just happy to get this to the next stage. So, I don't have any further comment. Anybody else? Okay, on to the next chapter. So, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That was a big deal. On to other important deals, but not quite as glamorous. Do I have a motion to authorize the advertisement of an ordinance amendment to transfer the collection of delinquent streetlight and fire hydrant fees to Portnoy Law?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. Earlier this year, we contracted with Portnoy Law to handle the delinquent, only delinquent refuse fees. What we also realized is, we also have two other fees on our tax bill. They are our streetlight and our hydrant. We'd also like to engage Portnoy for a similar service to collect, again, only delinquent streetlight hydrant, and then it'll be refused, but in order to do that, we must approve it by ordinance that they are our delinquent tax collector for those fees, and that's what this does, similar to what we did earlier this year with the delinquent refuse. this year with the delinquent refuse.
Very good. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $3,021,169.75, payroll totaling $655,908.08, and pension paid costs totaling $4,119.69 for October 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments or questions? Public comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the escrow release number three for Laurel Holdings Group LLC, 633 East Germantown Pike, in the amount of $60,746.29?
So moved.
Second.
Krista.
Thank you. This is a partial escrow release request submitted for the site caddy corner to us on the corner there, in the amount of $60,746.29. Our office has inspected the site and found the improvements to have been completed in accordance with the plans, and we recommend release in this amount. They're nearly complete there. After this release, there'll be $18,183.32 remaining in escrow.
Excellent. And where are they in the project? Do we know kind of what's happening there?
The only item that they have left to complete is to paint the crosswalks across the driveways. So they're pretty much there.
And that is an office, right?
It's an office on, or retail office, I believe, on the first floor, and then apartments on the second floor.
And do they, do we know yet if they have any?
I don't think it's apartments.
Occupancy?
Did they change that?
They never leased them as, I think that was their intent.
I know, there were changes, yeah.
I know, there's a fitness center on the first floor, and there's another commercial use proposed. I'm not sure exactly what's going on the second floor. I think it's going to be office.
Okay.
The developer has had some difficulty in leasing it, and he did, he did consider apartments. I don't believe he's doing that at this time.
Good, just curious. Thanks. Any other board comments?
No.
Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the partial roof replacement at 108 Black Walnut Lane?
So moved. Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. This is a partial roof replacement on one of the two original houses on Black Walnut Lane, a house built in the mid-'30s. This is only about 25% of a roof replacement. There, there's really no issue with it. The roof is currently cedar shake, it's being replaced with new cedar shake. Hard met and discussed this yesterday, and unanimously recommended approval of a certificate of appropriateness.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize the appearance of the township solicitor at the zoning hearing board to monitor zoning hearing board case 2022-36, which is 7111 Sheaf Lane Partners LLC?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mellor?
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is an application that has been continued to January?
11th.
11th at this point, and it is seeking a clarification, and depending on the clarification, potential variance that they are requesting, the board has indicated to us and the Solicitor's Office that they would like the solicitor to attend and simply monitor the case, not take any position, but monitor and report back as the case continues to go through once it is heard on January the 11th.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This is a large parcel of land, it's helpful to have the Solicitor's Office, Dave, thank you, and your team for, for being present with that. Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do we have any public comments at the moment? Any more board comments? So we did have executive session tonight where we discussed real estate, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night, White Marsh.